So, good evening, everyone. I would like to call these.
Recording in progress.
I would like to call the City Council and Planning Commission's special joint meeting for October 5th, 2021 to order. First of all, welcome all commissioners. Thank you for joining us again. There's some stuff I need to read. First one, the section forty-two of executive order issued by the Governor Newsom. Cities allowed to have to host city council meetings via teleconferencing and members of the public can observe and address the meeting telephonically or electronically.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I'm sorry, I have to interrupt. It's because of Assembly Bill that not the executive.
AB three sixty-one.
Yes, sir, sorry.
Yeah, I was reading, I knew something was off. That's why you saw me hesitating there. So, yeah, that's a new order. So, do I need to repeat anything else?
No, sir, you can keep going.
Okay. So, to listen to the meeting telephonically, please call one six six nine nine hundred six eight thirty-three, meeting ID eight one 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 eight five eight two one eight four, or through the city's live webcast on YouTube, connect with TC. And you and let's see here. So, Madam Clerk, roll call the City Council and the Planning Commission, please.
Yes, Mayor, sorry about that. Councilmember Chavez? Councilmember Mann?
Here.
He's here.
So, for the record, that Councilmember Viscara was waving and pointing to his ears up.
Mayor Protem Sternquist?
Here.
Mayor Yu?
I'm here.
Commissioner, excuse me, Commissioner Guan?
Yeah.
Commissioner Haddad?
Here.
I'm sorry, that was Vice Chair Guan. Commissioner Haddad?
Here.
Commissioner Lee?
Here.
Commissioner O'Larry?
Here.
Mayor Cordes?
I think Councilmember Viscara may be having some sound issues. So, shall we pause and wait just a sec?
Councilmember Viscara is working on his sound. We could have the three to five minute public comment period now and then be ready, hopefully, when he's finished.
Okay, let me do that, thank you, Mr. City Attorney. So, for those calling in, your audio will be unmuted during public comment and when public comment is open during an agenda item discussion, you can also email your request to speak to cityclerk@templestate.us right now and indicate on the subject line the item you wish to provide comment. So, we wanted to open up public comments while we're waiting for Councilmember Viscara to work on the sound. So, the City Council and Planning Commission will now hear public comments regarding items not listed on the agenda. The City Council will keep the public comments open for five minutes after last speaker to allow those who wish to speak to dial in. For those calling in, your audio will be unmuted now. If you wish to speak, please state your name and you'll be added to speakers list. Speakers will be called on one at a time to speak. You can also email your request to speak to cityclerk@templestate.us and indicate on the subject line the item you wish to provide comments. Madam Clerk, do we have any callers?
There is one caller, Mr. Sergio Gonzalez. We've asked him to mute if he wished to speak. And there are no email, public comments, or email requests to speak.
Okay, Mr. Gonzalez, you want to address the council during public comments?
No, I'm good, thank you.
All right, thank you. And if we don't have any calling, Mr. City Attorney, so we cannot quite close it right now, right? We have to keep it open for five minutes?
That's correct, sir. Now that we have no one, we go five minutes from right now. That gives anyone watching at home the chance to dial in and address the council. Five is a reasonable period, so we'll use that time. And if we can just all mute for five minutes while they reset the clock and we'll run it from now. And if we don't have anything, we'll move forward.
Okay, thank you.
Good.
All right, so our five minutes up. Councilmember Viscara, you can hear us loud and clear, I take it?
Yes, sir.
All right, let's continue. I think that we don't see any more email comments, Madam Clerk, right? Within the last five, right? Nor do I see any phone calls.
Correct.
Okay, then I will close public comment. We'll move on to the next item, which is new business. So, that's the purpose of tonight's meeting is really the SB nine urban lot splits. So, the council and the planning commission requests to review and receive the staff report. And should I start with you first, Mr. City Manager, or go straight to Director Reimers?
Thank you, Mayor Yu. I'll be very brief and I'll turn it over to Community Development, Dr. Reimers. Thank you, planning commissioners and council for being here tonight. This is probably one of the more consequential pieces of legislation that has come down from a land use perspective from the state in many, many, many years and will have an impact on the decisions that become before you as the planning commission and in some cases comes before the council, but primarily to you as the planning commission. So, we thought it was important for you to have a joint meeting tonight for both bodies to hear from each other and for the bodies, for us as staff to hear from you as to some of your concerns and some of what we would consider both the legal limitations, legislative limitations, and just overall planning limitations that this new legislation, effective January first, places on staff. And so that you understand when some things either do not come to you any longer or do come to you, some of the legislative constraints that are bearing down on us in terms of design review and other urban planning tools that we have used over the many decades to help create the urban environment that we've created here in Temple City for so many years. So, with that, and we'll look to your direction and as was discussed before, we will bring back to you as through the planning commission and to the council as well, some of the very limited options that we have if that's the desire of both the planning commission and inevitably the council to do. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Reimers.
Yes, good evening, Councilmember of Planning Commission and members of the public that are joining us tonight. Tonight, as we go through SB nine and urban lot splits, what I'd like to do is to break the presentation down into three pieces. First of all, explain what urban lot splits do and what the effects of SB nine are. Provide you some sample site plans and then talk to you about what are some options the city has as we move forward. And that's really where we're really seeking your input this evening is as we come back to you with an ordinance to implement this, what initiatives do you want us to move forward on? So, first of all, what does SB nine do? SB nine converts existing R-one zone properties that typically in most cities have a maximum density of six units to the acre and allows approximately thirty-five units per acre on those properties. And it does that by saying a single-family house can be subdivided into two units or on a lot, you can build two units. And on every single-family lot, almost every single-family lot, you can divide that into two lots. So, what that means is that a single family, where there is a single-family house now, you could subdivide that into two lots and build two units on each of those. So, a single-family lot with one house now could end up having four units. The good news is that includes ADUs and J-ADUs. So, it's not two units or four units plus ADUs. It's the ADUs are counted as a unit. And each unit can be, we have to allow at least eight hundred square feet for each of those units. When it comes to the lot sizes, the lot has to be approximately equal in size and the minimum size is twelve hundred square feet. Now, to give you a reference point, our single-family zone allows, requires a minimum lot size of seven thousand two hundred square feet. So, this is a big decrease in the minimum lot size. This ordinance does not, or this law does not apply to every single-family zone. There are some carve-outs. One of those carve-outs are urban areas and that's defined by the census. And so, if you're outside of an urban area, you do not have to comply with this law. So, on your screen is a map of the urban area that we are in. The urban area boundaries shown in that kind of neon green color. And Temple City is about in the middle there, highlighted in a black line. And so, we are within that urban area, so we do have to comply. But areas that are historic, so historic districts or historic landmarks, those do not have to comply with this law. The law sets some maximum setback requirements. So, we cannot require any more than a four-foot rear yard and a four-foot side yard. And so, typically where our rear setback would be fifteen feet and our side setback would be between five and ten feet, we can only require a four-foot side and rear yard setback. If someone wants to subdivide an existing structure, we cannot require any additional setbacks. If they want to tear down an existing structure, they can keep those setbacks if the new unit is of the same size and in the same location. In terms of parking, we can only require one parking space per unit. So, typically, we would require two parking spaces per unit. Here, we can only require one. And if one of these lot splits is within a half mile of a high-quality walking, of a high-quality transit corridor or a half mile of a major transit corridor or within a block of a car share, we cannot require any parking. And so, on the next screen.
Scott?
Yes.
Can you give an example of that? So, say, for example, my house on Camelia is half a block from Temple City Boulevard and there is a bus stop there. So, that's considered a high-transit area?
Well, as I understand it, a major transit stop is the intersection of two transit lines that have a headway of less than fifteen minutes. Right now in Temple City with the current service levels, we don't have a major transit stop.
Okay, that gives me a good guide.
Yeah, but we do have a high-quality transit corridor and that's shown on the next slide. This is a map that's prepared by SCAG. They designate the high-quality transit areas. And so, from this map, you can see that the transit area goes down Las Tunas, then heads south down Santa Anita. And then it also includes a small portion of the southern area of Temple City just south of Lower Zeus and near Temple City Boulevard. So, I've highlighted in yellow those areas that are within Temple City that are within a high-quality transit area. So, a half mile from those yellow polygons, those yellow shapes, people would not need to provide any parking on site.
Thank you.
So, some other limitations in terms of demolition. They cannot demolish or alter a structure in under three circumstances. If that structure is, has a covenant that requires it to be affordable housing, if the city is subject to rent control, or if the housing has been occupied by a tenant within the last three years, there is a maximum amount that can be demolished on the site and that's twenty-five percent. In terms of standards, the city is allowed to set some additional standards than it was originally required. That is required in the state law, but those standards have to be objective. We are prohibited from using subjective standards. So, we can set a standard like the building can only be one story or the building can only meet a certain high requirement or a setback of four feet. But a subjective standard would be something like a finding that said that the building had to be compatible. So, we can set design standards, lot subdivision standards, and zoning standards. In terms of processing, we cannot, we have to process them ministerially. And what that means is that the process can have no discretion. Meaning, so to speak, someone, a planner, just goes through a list of checkboxes, make sure that the plan I submitted meets those items. There's really no judgment, personal judgment involved. That's why this cannot go to a public hearing, cannot go to a director's hearing, the planning commission or council. In terms of right-of-way and easements, we can require that a back portion of the property have an easement over the front lot so that they can get to the street. Those types of easements are allowed. But we cannot require a dedication of right-of-way. So, we cannot require someone to dedicate an area for sidewalk and street purposes. We cannot require construction of off-site improvements. So, for instance, typically if someone built a new house and there was no curb and gutter and sidewalk, in some cases, we would require them to install that. We can't do that in these cases. Some other requirements are that the state has acknowledged that they cannot use these urban lots as a short-term rental. So, that's sort of Airbnb sort of idea. Again, we're not required to approve ADUs, so accessory dwelling units or junior accessory dwelling units on these properties. The structures can be attached. So, we can't set a standard that they must be detached. They can be attached if the applicant wants. And the owner does have to sign an affidavit that the owner intends to live on the site for three years. Now, what intend means and how that's enforced is going to be a challenge for staff as we move forward. And then lastly, they cannot subdivide a property as an urban lot more than once. So, you can't do an urban lot subdivision and then go back and do another one and another one and another one. You can only do it once. If a person subdivides a property under an urban lot split, they can't then also subdivide an adjacent parcel. So, and then lastly, if there are some non-conforming conditions, which tends to be like a setback that's non-conforming, we cannot require them to modify that in order to make it conforming.
Mr. Reimer, quick question on your previous slide. The owner must live there for three years. Let's say we have one lot that's got divided in two. Must the owner live in both of the future lots? Or the owner only lives in one of them and be able to sell or rent out the other one?
I think what the state would say is that the intent there is that they live on one of the original sites. So, the original parcel, they have to live on one of those lots.
Okay, thanks.
So, now I want to walk you through some site plans that we developed just to kind of demonstrate what this might look like over time. These are conceptual, think of them as sketches just to see, you know, what we're dealing with. So, this first one is a fifty-foot wide lot. It's two hundred feet deep. So, it's pretty deep. Down at the bottom of your slide is the street with a car, the sidewalk, and then you have the building running from there to the back. So, what this demonstrates is a four-foot rear setback and a four-foot side setback. These are shown as attached, completely attached. They all have a one-car garage. They have a twenty-foot wide driveway and that's what we believe the county fire department is going to require for fire access purposes. And what we found here is that with an eight hundred, that even with an eight hundred fifty square foot unit, that they would remain one story. One concern we had was that these would be two or even three-story units. But if we set a cap at eight hundred fifty square feet in this case, that it would still remain as a one-story development. This is the same lot, two hundred by fifteen. In this case, though, we looked at a fifteen-foot fire access, which the fire department approves in some cases. And in this case, we set the maximum size at eight hundred square feet. And what we found was with those two changes, reducing the width of the driveway and setting a cap at the building size was that we were able to get a larger rear setback of fifteen feet and a building separation of sixteen feet.
Um, yeah. I just want to point out that building code doesn't dictate say-up setback, but it did say if a wall is within five feet of the property or less than five feet of the property line, you're required to have one hour construction. And I don't see people building at a four-foot setback with a fire-rated windows. But that's a sign point.
This is now a smaller lot that we looked at. This is fifty feet wide, one hundred and fifty feet deep. In this case, we also showed the four-foot rear and the four-foot side setback with the one-car garages and the twenty-foot wide driveway. What we found was that in order to people to get the minimum eight hundred square foot unit, they would need to go up to two stories. And at two stories, no other development standards being set. These developments could, each unit would be about fourteen hundred square feet. So, if we didn't set a cap, these units would be about fourteen hundred square feet. In this case, we looked at reducing the driveway size down to fifteen feet. And what we found was that doing such would allow for larger units, fifteen hundred square foot units, still at two stories. And in this example, we then placed the cap, the eight hundred square foot cap along with the fifteen-foot driveway. And again, what you see is when that cap is installed, you get some additional separation, twenty-nine feet between the structures. You get a fifteen-foot rear setback. And so, what we're seeing is that capping the size of the units at eight hundred square feet or somewhere around there helps create some additional open space on the site. And even in this case, we added a second-floor step back along the side so that the second floor is setback four feet from the first floor along the side elevation. So, those are some things that we're able to get if we set a cap on the maximum unit size.
Question, Scott?
Yes.
That eight hundred feet, is that a minimum? Is there a maximum or minimum?
What the state law says is that we have to allow at least an eight hundred square foot unit. It doesn't have, there's no minimum unit size. If you wanted to do a four hundred square foot unit, nothing in the state law would keep you from doing that.
Wait, the state law says we need to have an eight hundred square foot unit, minimum?
It says we have to allow at least eight hundred square feet.
Okay, because the junior ADUs are less than eight hundred?
Yes, the junior ADUs are less, yeah.
Which is okay, but is there a maximum cap in each unit?
In the state law, there's not. So, that gives us some flexibility. If we wanted to set a cap at a thousand square feet or eight hundred square feet, we would be able to do that.
Okay.
And without setting that, theoretically, you could build from side to side with a four-foot setback around it?
Yes.
Okay.
So, oh, sorry, Mayor, did you have something?
Yeah, sorry, I was on mute. Does the state law say anything about floor area ratio and that sort of thing?
The only thing the state law says in regards to floor area ratio and lot coverage is that you can put it in place, but the FAR can't keep you from getting to that eight hundred square foot unit. And this next slide, we played with an idea of removing the driveway entirely. So, in this case, there's no parking on site at all since the state law would allow people to do such a scheme where there's no parking on site. So, there's no driveway here. Instead, the building is built around, like a bungalow court. It's built around some open space that's shared by each of the units. The open space measures around two thousand, twenty-five hundred square feet approximately. And so, this kind of matches the design scheme that we developed for the R-three zone. One of the benefits you see is that unlike the last three designs, this one, by removing the driveway, you're able to bring down the height of the building to one story. So, you've got a one-story structure built around some common open space.
Is it just me or did, Scott, can you go back to the previous slide? Doesn't that look like an army barracks or something? I mean, am I, does anybody else feel like that? I mean, plus, how do you get down a ten-foot driveway with a fire engine, get down a ten-foot driveway?
So, yeah, those are, so we're really not working here on the architectural quality of it. It's really just kind of massing diagrams at this point. And I'll show you some examples later on of actual bungalow courts that we could base, you know, an ordinance on if that's what the commission and council are interested in. In this case, the fire department only requires a twenty-foot wide roadway for fire access purposes if the length from the back of the building to the street is a hundred and fifty feet. So, in this case.
Assuming that's because that's how long their water lines are?
In this next scheme, we have an even smaller lot and we do have lots quite a bit that are fifty feet by a hundred feet. So, they're about five thousand square foot lots. In this case, we wanted to see, you know, what do we have to get up to three stories in height? In this case, we have two-story structures. This does meet the eight hundred square foot minimum. One is built to all the minimum setbacks of four feet in the rear and four feet on the side. So, in this one, we just barely escape getting a three-story structure. If the driveway in this case, for instance, was larger, we likely would need to put in a third story to get to the eight hundred square feet. This one is a lot that we have some lot configurations in the city that are very wide and shallow. So, this is a ninety by seventy-foot lot. In this case, the driveway is in the middle and it's twelve feet wide, which would meet fire access requirements. With this narrow driveway, the units would be about twelve hundred fifty square feet in size. So, because they're twelve hundred fifty square feet in size, there are some additional things we can do to improve compatibility. We can require, you know, additional rear setback. So, in this case, the rear setback would be around twelve feet. And then we could require some second-floor step backs. So, here you can see on both side yards, the second floor is stepped back an additional four feet. So, these were some site plans we just put together so we could see what the issues would be in the future and what development standards we may want to put into place as we go through the development review process.
Director Reimers, if you don't mind, I want to just be clear in my mind. Eight hundred, like Commissioner Guan was saying, was really the minimum. But can the city mandate a maximum?
Yes, there's nothing in the state law that keeps us from saying, from establishing a maximum.
Does anything in state law that prevent us by saying that if you go this route, you're a limited, single story?
We can set height limits. We can set based on height or stories. But if that robs someone of an eight hundred square foot unit, then they can push past that cap.
Okay.
Well, let's say it again, I'm sorry.
We can set height limits, but if those height limits keep someone from getting that minimum eight hundred square feet, then we would have to set aside those height limits.
Oh, okay. For this example that you're showing, two stories, is it four units or two units?
This is four units, so.
Four units of eight hundred each?
Yes.
So, top and bottom are separate?
Well, in this model, what we did is we had two units in the front and two units behind them in the back.
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay, so the last section of the presentation is to present to the council and commission some options we have moving forward. And this is where we could really use some direction from the council and the commission on, you know, what kind of buttons you want to press or what things you want to initiate as we move through this process. um, you know, what, what kind of buttons you want to press or what things you want to initiate um, as we move through this process. Um, the first is related to historic preservation. So um, properties that are designated historic or are within a historic district do not have to comply with this law. So it, it would be possible for us to adopt a historic preservation ordinance that allows neighborhoods, for instance, the ability to apply uh, to be a historic district. Um, this type of change would require a significant amount of time and investment from staff, so it's not something we could do right away. Uh, but we could begin moving on that sort of initiative.
Hey Scott, before you go further, um, you, you, it was before your time and like, probably before everybody's time except for maybe Cindy and Vince and, and Fernando, but you know, we, we tried to go this route at one time and it met with a lot of pushback from the city. Uh, they wanted nothing to do with historic preservation because of the guidelines and the rules and the restrictions that come with them. So I don't know if the law has changed at all, since this is probably about, I don't know, Vince, what was it, about eight, nine years ago that we even did a full study on this and identified certain, certain areas and and locations of historic value of this? You know, I, I mean, I'm assuming the rules are still the same.
Yes, the, the rules would basically be the same. Yes, sir.
No, I'm just saying, as an option, that might be a, maybe a tough sell to the public, um, but remains to be seen.
Um, yeah. I've got a couple of buildings that are historic preservation buildings and it can be a nightmare.
Yeah, and if I remember, you were one of the proponents against adopting uh-
And would still be.
Yeah. Okay, well, we just wanted to um, highlight these as options, so, but I do appreciate the feedback.
No, no, I understand. I'm not, I'm not trying to cut it off. I'm just saying that we have a little bit of, for want of a better term, history in the historic preservation area.
Yes, yes. Uh, the next slide is about impact fees. Um, so when the legislature approved this bill, um, there was nothing in the, there was no study done on what the impact would be to um, both the state and the local um, infrastructure, um, as this would create more growth. And so one way a lot of cities deal with that unknown is to implement a study to determine how much growth will occur, um, what the demand on that growth would be on, on the, on, in cities' infrastructure. And then establish a fee so that new development pays its fair share of its impact on the infrastructure. Uh, and so we could uh, begin an, an impact fee study to look at that. Um, those fees could pay for things like parks, for upgrades to the sewer system, um, upgrades to city hall, um, or, and even in consultation with the county library could fund improvements to their facilities. Um, so that, that, that might be a way of dealing with some of the unintended consequences.
Uh, Mr. Remer, if we go this route, are we limited to, uh, must we apply this impact fees to all development or can we single out uh, SB nine type of development?
Yeah, it, it would have to apply to all new developments.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, another option would be to require any new units that are urban lot split units to remain affordable. Um, since the, since the genesis of this um, law was to create more housing and more affordable housing, we could ensure that these new units are affordable, um, or provided an affordable rate. Um, at least for the tenants of the new units, um, the owner um, might be difficult to ensure that they're at an affordable rate. Uh, but this would also give us credit towards our annual housing reports and our um, housing element and arena updates.
And Scott, how would those affordable units for rental be determined?
So there's a formula that comes out every year that sets the affordability rates at very low, low and moderate. And then um, it would be up to the council to decide at what rate these would need to be provided, whether at very low, low or moderate. And then um, there would be an agreement or covenant that was placed on the property that it was kept at that rate for some amount of time. Typically, when affordable housing comes up, it's a fifty year covenant.
Fifty year?
Yes, but-
Wow.
But this is up to the council. I mean, you got, you can set your own guidelines in this case.
And so can you give me an example, say a two bedroom, one bedroom house at um, those three um, moderate, low, what was the other one? I forget.
Uh, yeah, very low, low and moderate.
Right.
I, I don't have it off the top of my head. I've put it together for previous CDBG program uh, presentations, but I don't have it with me today. But I can get back, I can get back.
Okay, thank you.
Um, another option is to look at the parking. Um, we were expecting to hear, or we would expect to hear comments from the public about um, additional developments coming along with additional traffic, more parking, more congestion and so forth. So one way of dealing with that would be to prohibit onsite and offsite overnight parking on these developments. The intention of this um, of this law was that this is an urban area and therefore there was no demand for parking. So we could ensure that by making sure there was no parking onsite or offsite and require people to get to the site by walking, bicycling, um, or taking an Uber or a Lyft, some sort of ride sharing program. Um, the benefit of this is that, um, as you can see on the slide, there's some great historical examples of bungalow courts. Um, you know, sharing some common open space between the units. Um, and then, as I mentioned in the previous slides, that it also helps um, bring down the height of these structures from two stories to one story.
Wouldn't this, wouldn't this option presume a whole new way of thinking and culture in our society? Because last time I looked, pretty much every family in Temple City had at least one and, and probably two or three vehicles in their family. And then when they start adding more units to their lot, or let's say the children or grandparents, there are additional cars. So what you're saying is that we won't allow any parking of vehicles anywhere in, in that particular area? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, I, I'm saying that was the, that's what this bill, that was the, the thesis of this very bill was that these are urban areas where there is so much transit that people only need to have one parking spaces and in many instances, don't need to have any parking. Um, and so um, one option here would be to say, okay, well, if that's the case, then we're not going to allow onsite or offsite parking.
I guess it gets back to the definition of urban, what'd you say, urban um-
Urban lot splits or-
Yeah, or no, the urban areas. So, oh, I know you showed the map, we're considered in so-called urban area, but I guess in the past, when I think of urban area, I think of downtown Los Angeles or downtown Glendale. I don't think of a residential bedroom type area that Temple City is known in. But apparently, we're not going to be treated as such anymore. And so I can get the idea of prohibiting onsite and offsite parking in those previous areas. Man, that is going to be a a tough sell in, in an area like Temple City.
And, and, and what, what it might do is it might end up um, requiring landlords to find tenants who don't have vehicles um, and are willing to, to live as if they live in an urban environment, but.
I would, I would argue that people who don't have vehicles are probably the ones that can't afford it. And of course, the only people that can afford housing in Temple City right now are people who are fairly well off. It's kind of a catch twenty-two situation. Okay. I guess I, I shouldn't be probably making comments more than I should ask questions, but sorry, it, this, this, this is, this has created a lot of uh, a lot of issues in my mind regarding, I, I, I get, I get it that I think staff has done a great job by identifying the options and obviously the question is whether they were working in Temple City. I guess ultimately is what we need to decide.
Um, uh, another thing too that we may want to look at is that the state, you know, approving this law did not look at the environmental impact of increasing the density um, of single family zones throughout the state. Um, so in order to deal with that reality, um, the city may be interested in looking at other ways of ensuring that we don't, or that we minimize our impact on the environment. And that could be done by requiring new housing to be LEED certified, um, which is a program that certifies structures to make sure that they're environmentally um, have minimal impact on the environment. There's also a new program called Pearl Certification that does the same. So what that might look like would be additional air filtration, solar power, um, triple pane windows to increase energy efficiency, uh, stormwater runoff systems, um, additional landscaping to reduce urban heat island effect and so forth. Um, we do need to come back with some new development standards. Um, some cities may just rely on their existing single family zoning. Um, but we may want to set some standards that are very specific to these urban lots, such as a maximum unit size. Um, so that's demonstrated here. We may also want to set a different height limit for these developments. We may want to set some open space requirements, um, may want to come back with some parking standards. Um, and then also, we may want to input some things like a front porch requirement. Um, and then we may also want to look at adjusting existing regulations. So what I mean by that is the city allows for flag lot subdivisions right now. And we also allow for just a regular lot split, when if you have a hundred foot wide property, you can subdivide it into two fifty foot wide properties. We may want to rethink that, um, because where you have a single lot now, now that could be subdivided into two flag lots, and then the flag lots could then be subdivided into two urban lots. Uh, so we may want, want to rethink our existing regulations there.
Scott? Um, I have a question regarding, can someone apply for a lot split? And I believe it was, uh, what was it, that maximum size was twelve hundred square feet?
Yeah. Uh, minimum, yeah.
Or the minimum. Can someone apply for a lot split? And then not build an ADU on it or an additional unit?
Um, I don't, I think, well, the, there is a residency requirement, so an owner has, the owner has to live there for at least three years, so they would have to build a structure.
So they would have to build a structure?
Yeah.
Okay, what if the owner was living in the structure and want, and um, there were, there were other homes on the property? Could they split that lot and potentially sell the others?
Yeah, I, I think that might happen. So for instance, on slide thirty-three, the one we're looking at right now, there's an example of a flag lot subdivision. So um, if somebody owned lot number one and lived on lot number one, they could then subdivide lot number two using an urban lot split um, and, but, and continue to live on lot number one. That, that, I, I think that would be allowed.
Wow, so many changes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, uh, just incredible.
Well, let me, let me see if I hear it uh, correctly. Uh, when you answered Mayor Protem's question, you said, you know, using the diagram on the left, um, so one uh, lives in one and split the lot by flat land in two, and then they take number two lot and split it into two other lots? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, yes.
And that doesn't surprise, that's not stopped them from splitting number one as well, a bit, a bit, uh, right? So you can continually split until it, the yield is less than eight hundred square feet, right? Just basically, you could take a large parcel and we have quite a few of those in the city, just keep splitting them, one after the other.
Not exactly.
You'd be correct?
Not exactly. Um, it, once you do an urban lot split on a property, you can't do another one. So you only get to do an urban lot split once.
I see.
So this um, on the, the picture on the left, it was not urban split. It was um, a flag lot, it was split, you know, prior to this urban thing. So then it can, it can be split one more time for each. Lot one and two can split into two. So this becomes four lots.
Yes, yep.
Even though they may be under two different owners currently.
That's correct.
Okay, wow.
I'm gonna just have um, one last slide, or actually two more, sorry. Um, there, we um, also have the ability to input some design standards. Now, they can't be guidelines. Um, they do have to be standards, so they're likely would be numerical in nature. Um, so that, that's another initiative we could implement as staff. And then lastly, just wanted to end with some next steps. Uh, in terms of next steps, we're looking at holding a planning commission meeting. Um, this is tentative, on November ninth, to bring back an ordinance to implement these changes in Temple City. Um, and then, we would then have a meeting with the city council on December seventh, um, for them to receive the planning commission's recommendation. And that would likely be an urgency ordinance that would then take effect the very next day on December eighth. And then um, there would also, then the, the state law doesn't become effective until January first. So on January first or January second, someone could come into city hall and actually apply for an urban lot split under the state law. And then we would have our own ordinances in place that would also work on those. And just to note, um, something the city attorney mentioned earlier was that we would propose to bring to you, council, um, an urgency ordinance and a regular ordinance um, through the process. And that, that concludes my presentation.
Okay, um, so what we'll do next is that um, we will allow, we would ask the plan commission to go ahead, to move forward with the questions. And then the city council would follow about questions. So without, turn the floor over to Chair Cordis. Um, can you ask your commissioners if they, if there are any questions?
Yeah, I should. Thank you, Mayor Yu. Um, yeah, our normal procedure in com- in commission is to do a round uh, of questions for the presenter and then to come back again and uh, enter into discussion with the commissioners. So uh, we will uh, at this point uh, open up questions to the commissioners and then I'll turn it back to Mayor Yu and he can do the same thing. And we'll proceed from there. So uh, with that in mind, um, and I know there's been a lot of questions already and there've been good questions. So let's uh, let's keep it moving and I'll ask, uh, first of all, Vice Chair Juan, uh, if you can unmute and uh, if you have any other questions that you'd like to ask Director Remers.
Yes, too many questions and I don't know where to start. And frankly, I, I would like to go from item to item and ask the questions, but I think it takes too long, so um-
And keep in mind, and we have a council meeting in about thirty minutes.
Yes, yes, that's why, that's why I'm not going to- and, um, but we do not have to make a decision tonight on all these items that, um, that you, you proposed, right Scott?
That's right. We're just looking for feedback from the commission. So if you do have a bunch of questions that, um, I'm happy to meet with you one on one. Um, and then we can walk through all of them. Uh, so if you just want to focus on, you know, maybe some of the overarching ones or ones that you may want to make sure everybody hears the answer to.
Okay, um, I, I, I would like to have a copy of this and I, I will make my questions on each item and then send it to you that way. And then after you had a chance to look at it, maybe we can discuss in the, in the next meeting, or addressing all the, the comments, I mean, the questions or, you know, in an email is fine.
And I, I believe uh, the scheduled calls for uh, planning commission meeting in early November to pursue this a little further, so.
Okay, okay. Okay, um, I think it's better to do that way for me. So I can, if you can email it to me and then I'll just write my questions under each comment, under each items. And we'll take it from there.
Will do.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Barry. Uh, let's move on to Commissioner Lee, if you would unmute and uh, address any questions you have to the director.
Yeah, hey, uh, Director Remers, I thought that was a really informative um, presentation. I do have one point of- Yeah, hey, uh, Director Reimers, I thought that was a really informative, um, presentation. I do have one point of clarification that I need. Um, or hoping to get, which is, you spoke about the option of having buildings be more environmentally friendly or lead certified. Um, can you explain to me why that is like a tool or an option in the toolbox? Um, like, what's the thinking behind it? Cause I didn't follow that.
Yeah, sure. So if, for instance, if we came to the commission and said we wanted to raise the density in a zone by, um, five times of what it is presently. Um, we would have to go through an envi- an environmental study and that environmental study would likely demonstrate that that would have an effect on the environment. Um, we would then create what are called mitigation measures to reduce those impacts, um, as much as possible. Um, so that the impacts are less than significant. Um, we can't, um, the state didn't go through that mitigation measure sort of process. Um, and since the state didn't go through it, we might want to institute our own mitigation measures in quotes. Um, and one of those might, the simplest way of doing it without, you know, being too subjective is by just requiring. Um, these units to be, uh, to meet some sort of standard like lead certification.
Okay, so basically because the state does not have to go through CEQA, we are trying to mitigate. Um, that circumvention in some way, uh, i- is that kind of right?
Yes, sir, yes.
Okay, cool, thanks. Got it. No question, no other questions.
Okay, thank you, Jeffrey. Uh, let's move on to, uh, Commissioner O'Leary, if you would unmute and address your questions. You're still muted.
Now?
Yeah, got it. Thanks, Tom.
I, I guess I cut to the chase. I have a question for Mr. Murphy. If that's okay?
I'm here, sir.
Uh, is there a way to stop a SB? Like maybe the Supreme Court of the state or the country? That, can that happen?
My understanding, sir, is that there's currently a constitutional amendment initiative being circulated. Um, but I, I have heard that people are trying to sue about the legality of the Senate bill. I haven't suggested that any of, of my clients join those suits because I don't believe that the bill on its face. Is illegal, uh, so that, uh, initiative of, or constitutional amendment initiative would be the best way to restore local control. Um, until that goes through. Uh, I think Mr. Reimers has given us a lot of tools for dealing with what we're gonna have to deal with for at least the first portion of two thousand twenty-two.
Okay, thank you. Well, he's the perfect guy to figure out all the, uh, the ways we should go about it. So great, I'm, I'm glad there's maybe a. Uh, some wiggle room, but it would take time, I understand. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Tom. Uh, let's move on to, uh, Commissioner Hadad, uh, if you would unmute and address your questions to, uh, Director Reimers.
Thank you, Chairman Cordis. Um, and thank you, uh, Director Reimers for that presentation and the report from your staff. It's a lot of information and, um. I guess my, my two cents, um, I, I understand the motivation from the state. There's a housing crisis that we're trying, they're trying to come up with creative ways to. Make the housing crisis more, um, manageable. Um, but there are a lot of things here that are happening and all the buttons that you shared with us that we can possibly push. Um, I think are ways that we can maybe slow down the train. So if that's the sentiment of the council and, and the commissioners, I think when we look at those options that you're giving us, even though they may not be the most. Favorable, like no cars, no parking. I, I, I can see that being a, a tool in a sense to slow down that train because then it makes it less. Less likely, maybe a little less likely to try for a developer to want to do an urban lot split. So. That's just my overarching impression, but I do have a one question about the impact fees. Um, I know you said that we cannot single out urban lot splits to have an impact fee that, uh, it has to be applied to all new developments. But can we have like some type of tiered impact fee system? So, you know, the more, the, the greater the lot splits, the greater the impact in my mind. So if somebody did one new development. The impact fee could be a lot less, um, a much lower cost. So it's not gonna, you know, um, stop a developer from being. From investing in the community for something like a single family home. But if somebody wanted to do like an urban law split, can it be a, a scaled up? Exponential impact fee that might be more cost prohibitive for somebody to want to do that.
So theoretically, yes. Um, lot, impact fees are highly regulated and they do need to be based on real, real studies of numbers. Um, what, what impact fees tend to demonstrate is that, I mean, if it's done by unit. Um, that multifamily development has, um, has lesser of an impact on open space or on, um, libraries and on sewer systems. But that's per unit. Um, so while if you built a single family house on one parcel and your impact fee was twenty thousand dollars. If you would have built four units on that same parcel, the impact fee collected by the city would be eighty thousand dollars, something like that. But generally, what happens with impact fees is that, um, the denser the development, the, the less per unit charge is, is developed. And that's just kind of big picture.
I see. So it's almost the inverse of that idea?
Yeah.
But I mean, does it have, does it have to be, it has to be justified that way? Or is it up to the discretion of the city?
It, it's because, um, with every, the, the denser the unit, the less occupants there typically are. And the less occupants, the less impact there is on infrastructure.
And in addition to that, Commissioner Hadad, one other, um, measure we'd have to take is kind of do it of. A very rough two eighteen, Proposition two eighteen legal analysis as well to make sure that we're covered under the law. With those kinds of, uh, uh, regulatory fee schemes.
Okay. All right, just, that was just an idea that I wanted to learn more about. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Serge. Um, I'm gonna limit my questions just to one and, um, and then I'll turn it over, uh, to, uh, Mayor Yu again for questions from council. But my question has to do with, um. The affidavit that needs to be signed, the intent for the owner to stay in place for three years. And I know, uh, Scott is already. I tell us I has the word intent, uh, but I gotta ask the question. So a, a person, an, uh, an applicant. Can file an intent and then, uh, or, uh. You know, a- after six months, change his mind and move somewhere else. And the enforceability of that, what, what recourse do we have?
Well, that, that, that's a great question. And, and how does the city find out if the owner is not, is not occupying the structure? Um, yeah, i- it's difficult. Um, you know, we're gonna require inspections every six months to determine whether the person is living there. And if they're not living there, how do you legally require them to move back to that location? Um, it's, i- it. I, I think it was well intentioned, but I don't think the mechanics of it were completely thought out.
Yeah, meanwhile, the lot has been split. You've got two tiny little lots, two tiny little houses, four tiny little houses, and, and the owner's gone.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's, uh, I, I, I see a, a lot of, uh. Issues with this, unfortunately.
Yes, sir.
And I know the intention was, was good. Anyway, thank you, uh, Scott. And at this point, um, I'm going to, uh, turn it back to Mayor Yu. And, uh, I, I'll save the rest of my discussion, uh, for, uh, our last pass through.
Okay, now, thank you, Chair Chairman Cordis. Um, so I'm gonna go through and call it on our city council members for any question, additional questions that have not been asked. And knowing that seven oh seven, and, um, so I will start with Councilmember Chavez. Any further questions?
Um, Scott, can you speak real briefly about what, what was the goal of SB nine?
The goal was to provide more housing, um, additional supply of housing to help reduce the cost of housing.
Okay, so I guess, so, so they assume that, that this new housing is going to be quote affordable housing?
Not essentially, not necessarily.
Yeah, well, I don't think it's going to be, but was, I mean, if, if, if they want more housing so people can have it available, that's, that's one thing, but how can they afford it? Same time, so. Okay, um. Mister, our Senator Atkins, where is she from?
I think she's from San Diego County.
Oh, okay. All right, so he's down here in San Diego. Okay, um, this is more of a quest, quick question for Greg. Greg, uh, these options that have been, uh, proposed. Have we kind of vetted those out from a legal standpoint? Are we on, on good grounds, uh, as far as, um, being able to enact these types of, uh. Ordinances to offset the impact of the, of SB nine?
Terms of the, the general concepts presented tonight, yes. Uh, as Mr. Reimers and his staff begin putting them together based on your input tonight. We'll keep working with them to make sure the specific details are as, uh, defensible as possible. Um, but before we really drill down on those details, we wanted to hear from you all tonight on. What your priorities were, if there were things you didn't want Scott and his team to do. Um, no, no use kind of wasting our legal time drilling down on things that weren't going to be options for you. Um.
But do, do you guys want then to hear from of it as to which of the six options we want you to focus on then? Or? I mean, is that ultimately the goal tonight? Cause I haven't heard anybody talk about any of the options so far.
I, I think that would be really helpful for us as staff.
Okay, well, well, from my, from my standpoint, I mean, I, I think historic preservation is gonna be a, 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 a long shot because we have looked at that issue in the city before. And it didn't fly the first time. I don't know that it will fly again. Um, I, I, I like the impact fees on existing infrastructure. I think, uh, if you're going to do something like that, you should pay your fair share. Um, getting to, uh, Commissioner Hadad's point, uh, maybe some type of, of, um, equitable, uh. Fee share that, um, people who do it, who, who are taking advantage of this versus those who are not. Um, maybe a different fee structure than that. Um. I mean, I like the idea of affordability requirements. I mean, if that's, that seems to be the original intent of the bill, I'm not sure it's going to. Play out that way, but, uh, it's, certainly that's a worthy, uh, uh, you know, way to go. Um. Parking and traffic, uh, I don't know, that's, uh, it's gonna be a tough sell, uh, yeah. I remember it, it makes me think about when, uh, we wanted to put bike lanes in and our whole city came apart, uh. And, uh, convincing people to give up their cars and start riding bikes or taking public transportation may be a, a tough sell as well. Uh, environmental impacts, I like that idea. Um, you know, I mean, obviously, uh. You know, this is, I think it's gonna have a big environmental impact. And then, of course, uh, it's always good to have new development standards, I think, especially when you're facing something like that. So anyway, that's my two cents on the option and, um, to get to Mr. Cordis', uh, statements, uh, I think, and I've said this before. Uh, this is a typical state legislation without thinking ahead of the impact. And also the enforcement issues and simply taking the position that we'll let the local governments figure that out. And, and that's what's happening here, I think, so. That's all I have, Mayor Yu.
All right, um, thank you, uh, Councilmember Chavez. Um, moving on to council question, Councilmember Man, any further questions?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Yu. Of Scott, does SB nine apply to other zones like R two, R three mixed use? Sorry. No, it only applies to single family zones. Okay, then my, my next question is, if you compared what SB nine allows in terms of density per acre. Which is more denser, R two, R three, or the new R one standard?
The new, um, well, this new urban lot subdivision in Temple City's context will likely end up. Um, at thirty-five units per acre, which is approximately the R three zone. So. It would likely be higher than the R two.
So what would happen if we rezoned the entire city R two?
It, it was a thought I had. Um, I, I didn't, I didn't propose it because I didn't think it was politically possible. Um, but it is, it's definitely a possibility. We could rezone all the R one areas to R two and, and avoid the urban lots but requirements that way.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure there's a lot, second, third, fourth order repercussions that I haven't thought through, but. That was the first thing that came to my mind was, um, was that. Um, and I guess, so just another question, um. How, how, how does this affect our current? Requirements for open space? Cause it, it seems like a lot of the examples you provided, um, there seems to be a lot of hardscape. If, if lot splits were, were done.
Yeah, it, it's going to, it's going to be dramatic, a dramatic impact on open space. If you think about our single family neighborhoods, they already have large front yards, um, even backyard. Um, which is probably why the city's been so successful despite the lack of parks. Um, we've had very large yards to play in. Um, if these areas get, um, subdivided and large fire access roads get built and setbacks get reduced to four feet. People will have nowhere to recreate and so you're gonna see a, a large demand on open space side.
Okay, thank you. That's all the questions now.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Scar. Any further questions?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
It's working. Um, can you go back to the previous slide?
You want the one with the initiative?
Yeah.
Yeah. There you go.
Well, just off the top of my head, well, in fact, let me preface this first. You and I did a, um, a one-on-one on existing zoning and that. I'd like to do that again on this because it's a little more comfortable when you have some time. Um, okay. The historic preservation, of course, gives me heartburn. Uh, affordability requirements, also parking and traffic. I think that's really a problem. Um, environmental impacts, uh, uh, I'm okay with that. I think we probably need to pursue that. I, and, uh, the design standards, that's, that's a little scary. Um, and I, I do have other questions, but I, I'd rather have a better understanding of the overall bill. So I'll wait till we have a chance to go over it again.
Very good.
What, one thing I, I, I wasn't hearing and it's probably simplistic, but, um, height requirements for stories. Is it, is that mitigated in any way?
Well, so the, the bill doesn't address height, so we can't establish a height requirement. Under the R one zone. We're only allow two stories maximum, but the council also passed an ordinance within the last few years that said. But if you're on a flag lot, which is essentially what this would be, if you're on a flag lot, you're only allowed to do a one-story house. So it's clear to. Me that the council's desire would be to keep these as one-story structures. Um, but in, as I showed in the slides, that's gonna be impossible in order to meet the eight hundred square foot requirement on small lots. But we will come back with some height requirements, um.
Well, that could also be a useful, uh, patrol measure, couldn't it?
Well, we can try and, we can try and use height, but if the height gets in the way of someone getting an eight hundred square foot unit, then the height limit would be set aside.
And we would be compelled to do that?
Yes.
Okay. We'll talk some more. Thank you.
Okay, very good.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Burtemps. Second question, you have any further questions?
Um, I have a question. I lost my Zoom page. There we go. Um, Scott, technically. This bill eliminates our R one zone potentially, right? Cause pretty much anybody can do whatever it seems they'd like to do within those, um, requirements for lot splits. I mean, it seems that if we, when you, um, said that, um, you had thought about the R two zoning the whole city R two. It's the first thing that came to my mind too, also. Um, and you said, well, you weren't sure politically. Were you talking politically with the council or a political? or politically with our legislative chairs because legislature? Cause with them, I really don't care at this point because they're just taking away local control.
I, I was thinking locally. Um, I think a, a citywide change from R one to R two would, um, would, would bring us a lot of comments from the public.
Okay. Negative karma comment.
Yeah.
But I think it would be because they're not educated in what we're losing with this, with this bill as far as having, you know, the nice front yards or the nice backyards.
Yep, yep.
Right. I mean, it, it seems that the educational piece would really have to come into play because if someone isn't aware of what SB nine is at this point, they're not going to be aware of it until you say, hey, we're changing your zone from R one to R two. And then they're going to take notice. But I think that's where the city can come into play. I mean, in your opinion, if we re-zone the whole city to R two, it solves a lot of problems for us, correct?
Well, it, it might and it may not. Um, uh, the issue here is we don't know yet what the demand is for this sort of thing. Um, so we might be getting a bit ahead of ourselves. Um, once perhaps we see what the demand is, then we, then we may want to take that step. But it's, it is a big step. It's a big leap to take. Um,
Okay. I don't have any other questions. I just think that somehow we need to get ahead of this before we have a flood of people coming in. I mean, it's already happening on my street with second units and no parking available. It's, it's just going to continue to be at that point where there are no more backyards with green space. Even with the ADUs and now if we have the lot splits, it's just going to be exacerbated even more. I don't know what the answer is, but I think we're all clever enough to figure something out together. And that's it.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Pretend. Uh, I only have a couple of questions and, uh, one of them was already asked and I'll save my comments on this for our next segment. Um, the two question I have is kind of analogous to what, uh, Councilmember Men had asked. Uh, currently we have permeable standards. Would, this doesn't set aside that permeable standards, right?
No, it doesn't.
And then in our current code, um, we have the design incentives. Again, this doesn't set aside design incentives.
It does. Well, it does in some cases. So for instance, we have a design incentive related to architectural style. Uh, that, that would be a subjective requirement. So we wouldn't be able to institute that.
Well, we can easily change that by, yeah, I don't know. Requiring the, the plan's been designed and stamped by an architect or, or landscape architect. But anyway, I'll, I'll, I'll move on to, uh, to, those are two, those two are my questions. So at this time I'd like to open up for public comments. And Madam Clerk, are there any email comments?
Yes, Mayor, I do have one.
Could you please read it?
Yes, it is from Don Chen. And the email public comment is how would this bill affect property tax assessment? And that's the only public comment email.
Uh, do you want to address that, uh, Director Remus?
Uh, I, I can take a shot at it. Um, if someone is demolishing a structure and building a new structure, their property taxes would be reassessed. Um, if somebody's doing an addition to a property, um, those building permits are reviewed by the assessor's office and, um, tax rates are assessed, um, differently in those, um, those instances. But if someone is interested in doing this and wants to know what the tax implications are, it'd be best for them to reach out to the tax assessor's office.
Okay.
Um, and let, let me just add, sir, that if the, the commenter is concerned as a neighbor, um, as a neighbor, there would be no impact on your lot if your neighbor decided to do this. The impacts, um, would be, you know, physical to your lot, but there would be no, uh, tax impacts to your lot.
Okay. And moving on, um, uh, at this point, um, do we have any callers who would like to address the city council?
Mayor, we will unmute any callers.
Uh, do we have any callers? Uh, please address the city council if you want to address the council. Hearing none, yes.
We've, um, requested callers to unmute their audio if they wish to speak.
Okay. Now, Mr. City Attorney, do we, is there a five-minute, uh, limit here according to?
There is.
Be one?
There, there continues to be a reasonable time limit, uh, given that this is not an action item, but an input item. And the public can give input in other ways before this even goes to the planning commission. Uh, if we can just give, um, uh, if the city clerk can just give us maybe sixty seconds more to make sure nobody calls in, I think that would be reasonable for this item.
Yeah, Madam Clerk, would you, um, I don't know if you have a timer ready, but.
We would have to, um, disable Scott's, um, ability to share so we could put up the clock.
That's fine. If you can just count it, uh, just let us know when sixty seconds is done, ma'am.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, if there are members of the public who are listening or end up watching this presentation later, they can always contact the planning department at planning@templecity.us. And that's the easiest way of reaching us, planning@templecity.us. And we can send them copies of the legislation of this presentation or anything else.
Um, while we're waiting, uh, perhaps I can talk about our timing. It's, uh, seven twenty-five right now. Um, so, uh, I hate to leave this on, uh, without any comments of staff. So, uh, Mr. City Ma- uh, Manager and, uh, Mr. City Attorney, are there any, um, legal, uh, reason why we cannot start our regular meeting a little later to allow for this meeting to finish?
I, I see none, sir. The public hearing tonight doesn't have a time certain, so I, I think you're just fine continuing this. Until you, you're finished.
Yeah, cause we're so close.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. All right. The time is up, so I'll close, um, public comments, and then now's the time to give staff any final comments or any questions. And again, I'll turn the floor over to Chairman, uh, Cordis.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Yu. Um, yeah, at this point, we would normally go around, uh, the planning commissioners and give each one an opportunity to, to comment on it based upon what you've heard. Uh, I think, uh, Director Scott has, and staff has done an excellent job of teeing this up on very short notice. Um, the structure is great. So I, I think to expedite this, if we could follow the, uh, options for the city initiatives and if you could address your comments primarily to those. But if you have other comments, I don't want to hold you back either. So, uh, why don't we go around? Let's start with, uh, this time with Commissioner Haddad, if you would unmute and, uh, we would welcome your comments.
Thank you, Chairman Cordis. Yeah, and after listening to everybody's thoughts on these items, I mean, everybody, I think, brought up some really good points. Um, I think the perspective here is really like, do these help us slow down the process of SB nine in some way? And I think there is merit to all of them, including ones that may be unpopular, like not allowing onsite or offsite parking on a lot division. I know that sounds a little bit far-fetched and it's a, you know, culture shift, especially in a county like Los Angeles. Um, but maybe that'll help, um, with the process. So I'd be interested in learning a little bit more about the pros and cons for each one of these items. Um, I know that there is an idea about making things R two, but I, and it, and theoretically an R two would make it less dense, maybe than this two subplot division and then two units per subplot, but it's still, you know, makes it more dense. So it's almost like, you know, you're between a rock and a hard place if you do, if you choose that path. So that would be my comment. I just know that we're going to have a continuing discussion in the next month. So I'd like to learn a little bit more about these options and maybe some more creative solutions. So thank you.
Thanks, sir. Uh, let's go to Commissioner O'Leary, uh, if you would unmute and, um, give us your input on this, please.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I, I think that if we have Mr. Murphy and Mr. Remers and his staff, uh, put together all the things that, uh, they deem necessary for this to work to the best of, uh, that it can, I think is a good idea. I think with, uh, the input from the city attorney will help, uh, a lot. So that's it.
Thanks, Tom. Uh, let's go to Commissioner Lee. Uh, if you would unmute and address your comments, please.
Yeah, um, I, I basically echo the previous comments from the commissioners. Um, I personally think that there needs to be more discussion on, um, on what the cons are, right? Like the, cause there's, we see the benefits to some of these and how they can mitigate. Um, but what are some of the unintended consequences or the, the things that we're not talking about just yet? Um, so basically it's a long way of saying, I think we need a, a little bit more discussion on that. Um, even with looking in traffic, maybe there's a, a way to utilize that tool. Or, um, I'm pretty agnostic about historic preservation, but maybe there's a way to use that effectively in certain cases. Um, again, it's a long way of saying, I think we need to flush this out a little more.
Okay. Thank you, Jeffrey. Uh, let's go to Vice Chair Guan. Uh, if you would unmute and, uh, give us your comments, please.
Yes, um, with all, every, all the comments from, from the commissioners and, and council members. Um, and we all agree that there are too many things that we need to flesh out on each and every, uh, initiative that's, uh, that staff has put together. Um, uh, personally, I think, um, there's a, a long discussion needed for each and every single item that is in the initiative before we can, uh, finalize. And, um, just for the fact that how many of you would think we can survive in Temple City without a car? At, at the moment, I think it's challenging. At least it's challenging for me and my family now with no car. Living in Temple City at, for, at this time, we're not quite there yet. The convenancy of public, uh, transportation um, at this location, at the moment, are not ready for that yet to me. So we'll have a long discussion later, uh, item by item in detail. Uh, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Beverly. Uh, okay, let me, let me kind of sum up here my, my thoughts on this. I want to go back to what, uh, Councilman Chavez said about a cultural change. Uh, I happened to move into Temple City in nineteen seventy-two, shortly after it became a city. And we were in the process of moving from a, a county rural area to a suburb, suburban area. And it's kind of where we're at now. And it, it, this would push us further. My, my comments are they would push us further into an urban area. And, uh, I don't think that we have the infrastructure in place to support a lot of this, including transportation. Uh, including, uh, everything from u- utilities and, and I won't go into all of it. But, uh, it is a cultural change and, um, I've kind of been looking at this through one eye for the last year while it's been discussed in Sacramento. Now that I've actually seen the bill, uh, it has changed a little bit. I want to work with it as best I can. Uh, I think that there are some areas that could be abused in it. And I, I know what the intent was, but I think I do. Anyway, I, um, let me go real quickly through, through the list of incentives because I wanted to give, uh, Director Remers some, some ideas. What I look for is what I call a low-hanging fruit, the easy ones. And, um, I think, um, we definitely need new development standards for, uh, the lot split. Uh, initially I thought we would have to retrofit this and address all of our ordinances dealing with this, but it doesn't appear that that's, that's how we're going to do this. It's going to be, this is going to be a separate carve-out piece, if I, if I'm using that term correctly. So I think we do need new development standards around that. Some design standards, yes. And, uh, uh, adjusting existing regulations, yes. Uh, impact fees, uh, I'm not sure what those are. But, uh, if it has to do with keeping, uh, Temple City, uh, finances in shape, I'm all in favor of it. Uh, the city enjoys a, uh, a very high standard, according to what I'm reading from the state auditor. And for the past three years, our finances have been, uh, one of the best cities in the area. And I'd sure like to keep it that way. Um, environmental impact, yeah. Uh, let's see, traffic and parking. Uh, this is a tough one. I, um, I'm going to skip this one. I don't think this is low-hanging fruit. Affordability requirements. I've also got mixed feelings on this. I think I would look at this as a way to, uh, control some abuse in this. If we did require, have some affordability requirements. Um, what I would not want to see is, uh, unscrupulous developers, uh, doing lot splits and putting up more affordable housing, unaffordable housing. So smaller, smaller pieces of property at, at more, at, at, uh, more expensive prices. I think that that's the worst case scenario. Um, so I'd look at the affordability requirements as a way to counter that perhaps. Uh, historic preservation, there's been some discussion of it. I know I was on the planning commission when this came up, uh, a number of years ago, along with Commissioner O'Leary. And, uh, yeah, I agree, this is going to be a difficult sell to our community. Uh, although personally I wouldn't mind taking a look at it, but I, I think it's going to be a tough sell. Uh, those are my comments. Uh, I hope this has shed some light on it and, uh, gives you some ideas, uh, to move forward. And at that point, uh, at this point, I'll turn it back to Mayor Yu.
Uh, thank you, Chairman Cordis, and thank you, Commissioners. And very quickly, I will go around the, uh, city council members, uh, for their comments and, and any final question, starting with Councilmember Chavez.
Thank you, Mayor Yu. First of all, I just want to express my disappointment in the fact that, uh, we only gave this an hour and a half, uh, to look at. I don't think it's nearly enough time as indicated by the comments by everyone tonight, uh, to throw this in front of a council meeting, especially, I think, did not give it its due justice. And I think, uh, uh, you know, if we were going to do this jointly, we should have done it separately and apart and, and allowed a much more time to, to take a look at this because there have been a lot of good things stated, a lot of good questions, which we've simply run out of time. So again, maybe next time we'll, uh, think about that in the future. Um, I just want to get one thing straight, Scott, maybe you can answer. So it sounds to me like one of the options that you did consider, but did not put it down. And that is this changing zoning. Um, i- i- am I correct in that assumption that's so? Because it's been mentioned a couple of times about this, well, to overcome this rule or this law, all we need to do is change it from R one to R two. Is it that simple?
Well, the typically if you were to double the density of a zone, you'd have to go through a zone change process. You'd have to notify the property owners and you'd have to go through an environmental clearance.
I understand that there's a process that you would, I understand there's a process you would go through, but let's assume that process, we did go through that and We did go through that and it went through the process. Is that going to avoid the, uh, implementation of SB nine completely?
No. Well, SB nine only applies to single family zones.
Okay, so that's what I mean. So it would then. So SB nine, if, if the entire city went from an R1 to an R2, SB nine would not apply to the city of Temple City. Is that correct?
That's, uh, that's correct, yes.
But obviously to get to that point would be next to impossible. Certainly would have political ramifications, I'm assuming.
Yes, sir.
Um, alright, so although that's thinking kind of outside the box, I don't know that I would necessarily. It is an option, but not one that, uh, is down on the list. Um, okay, well, I don't really, I think all the questions have been asked, or at least that are going to be asked. Obviously, there's more information we need. Um, well, you know, just as, as I said earlier, uh, you know, another indication of a state, uh, legislature, uh, basically, framing something with a good intent, that is to provide more affordable housing. The consequence, as we all know, is going to be less green area, um, and creating an environment that is up to the local government to enforce, which will be almost impossible to do so. Um, basically leave us holding the bag. Anyway, doesn't surprise. Thank you, Mayor Yu.
Uh, thank you, Councilmember Chavez. Uh, next, Councilmember Man, any final comments?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Yu. Yeah, when, when I asked the question about the R2, I was half joking, but, uh, it was kind of also an expression that, um, I think SB nine is kind of a joke. So, but unfortunately, it's, it's passed. Uh, we're, we're dealing with it. Uh, but similar to what Councilmember Chavez mentioned, I think even if it sounds like a silly idea, I think it's worth at least looking at it from a theoretical standpoint, just what are those other ramifications that we haven't really considered down the line? Like, for example, I, I don't know if you can, or we as a city can re, sort of change the R2 guidelines to make it less dense than it is now. From what I recall, it seems like there's state guidelines in place that prevent us from doing anything that downzones something. Like, if you're going to change the zone, it always has to be up. At least that's what I remember. Yes. So, so I don't know what those ramifications are. Um, but in terms of the, um, the options for city initiatives, um, I think the one that I think would be hard for us to justify is, is historic preservation because it doesn't, it seems like the only one that would not be applied uniformly across the board. But I mean, I, I have a hard time imagining us saying the entire city's going to be under a historic preservation zone. So there would be this subjective process that it seems like we have gone through before. Um, and we ran into roadblocks. So to me, that just seems, I don't know, unless there was a compelling reason that it could actually be a tool for us. I don't see any use from us in having staff look into that in more detail. Maybe like a rehash of what was done before and just summarizing what those issues are would, would probably be enough to satisfy my curiosity. Um, the, the one thing that stands out for me out of all of these is affordability requirements because, you know, if we're really stuck with SB nine, uh, and it doesn't get overturned by other ballot initiatives, maybe that's the one initiative where we can get the best of both worlds, so to speak, where if someone really was going to be doing lot splits and you have this affordability requirement, then you may end up solving, or at least partially solving, one of the other problems we hear our residents talk about, which is houses in Temple City are really expensive, especially the new ones. Um, and at the same time, if you had a developer or someone who was really trying to just use SB nine to make profit, maybe this deters them from doing that. But I don't know where that balance is. Like, where, where is that so-called sweets spot from a policy standpoint that allows us to achieve both ends? Uh, and it seems like a complex question because there's market forces at play, there's material construction forces at play. Um, I mean, it's just, the more I think about it, I, I don't even know how we would ask staff to really present that. But I guess that's what I'm asking is may, maybe is, is there a, a way we can have kind of both things? Um, kind of have our cake and eat it too, so to speak. Um, as for the other things, um, I am interested to see what impact fees would look like. Um, if you could educate us on sort of the timetable and the amount of money and effort it would take to undertake, undergo a study that allows us to move towards the impact fees, I'd be interested in that. Um, I, I agree with Commissioner Haddad's comment on parking and traffic. I think even though it seems really far fetched, but really we're looking at these as theoretical policy tools. I mean, we're not saying the moment we allow this, everyone's going to rush in and start building, you know, lots with, with no onsite parking at all. Um, I think the market forces at play in terms of what is the actual demand from people buying homes is, in my, in my mind, is going to balance that, this massive rush to develop these types of, um, these types of, uh, projects. I, I think like, uh, Commissioner Guan said, if we don't have the transportation infrastructure in place, it seems hard for a developer to justify, well, I'm going to build that type of housing just because the city allows me to, right? So I, I'd be interested just to see what that looks like, um, theoretically. Um, environmental impacts, um, again, I think it's worth, uh, looking at just because, again, these are tools to perhaps deter developments. Um, and again, design standards, development standards and adjust existing regulations. I absolutely think we, we need to look at that. Um, I'm particularly interested to see how we would modify our existing subdivision guidelines and requirements so that, is there a way we can prevent a subdivision than an urban lot split? I don't know if that's possible. Um, but that would, that would be sort of my question. Do we have any control over that from a policy standpoint? Um, and, and my last overarching comment is, I want to remind everyone, we do have a general plan that's still pretty new. Um, I, I think in my opinion, the cornerstone of that general plan is to preserve the single family neighborhood of Temple City. I believe that still holds true. Um, and so I always look back at that as sort of the central policy guidance in terms of what, what we would like it to do. So how do we reconcile the general plan we have with all these things that seem to strip away what we put together? That's all the comments I have. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, uh, Councilmember Vescar.
Uh, I think Councilman Mann made excellent points there, and those are a lot of the thoughts that were going through my mind. And I'm wondering, are, are, are we all thinking that this is going to make for an eventual land rush? Uh, do we really have a concern that the developers are going to come galloping in? And, and, uh, you know, raping and pillaging, as it were, taking advantage of, of, uh, of, of, uh, SB nine and the ability to, to make money from it? I don't know. Um, I have, I wish there was some way to predict what, what the outcomes are, are, are going to be. One of the, the, uh, well, there's a lot of things really, but one of the things I was thinking about too is, um, listen to the news, we keep talking about inflation and Janet Yellen's concern that we're head, we might be heading for a large recession. That's going to affect things. And, um, what that effect is going to be, there will be an effect. We don't know what it's going to be. Uh, there won't be that much money floating around out there and there'll be people looking for ways to, to make it. Um, those are just kind of random thoughts that I, I can't gel, I haven't gelled yet. So we'll just have to, I guess we're just going to have to dig in and look at, get into the weeds and, and, and get as much detail as we can so we can, I guess, protect ourselves, protect the city. Those are my thoughts.
Thank you, um, Councilmember Vescar. Uh, Mayor Protem Sternquist, any comments?
Um, yes. Can you, am I muted?
No, we can hear you loudly, please.
Okay, thank you. Um, I think something that I was still wondering about, Scott, was, you know, the, um, assembly somewhat bragged that they conceded some power to local jurisdictions. And that was to allow agencies to deny, um, some housing projects if the building official found that the project would have a specific adverse impact upon health and safety or the physical environment. How, a- and that it couldn't be mitigated. How can we use that to our advantage?
That's a good question, and I haven't really heard a lot from, um, either people in the planning world or in the building world talking about that yet. Um, it's a very, very high standard. It's one of the highest standards that's in state law. Um, and it doesn't talk about general welfare. It talks about only health and safety. And in the past, it's, it's been a high standard in that in the construction of this building, for instance, that it would have an impact on the health and safety of someone living on, on an adjacent property. So for instance, if, if you're building on a hillside and that hillside does not have soil capacity to withhold the structure, then that could have a very real public safety impact on the adjacent properties. Um, you know, th- those are the types of issues that would, um, in the past have been affected by that sort of public safety requirement, health and safety requirement.
Okay, well, I think that if we could explore that more thoroughly because it is the, the only one avenue that they gave to cities saying, this is your local control with SB nine. So I think we need to explore that, to use that to our advantage. And also, when you have an R1 zone, SB nine deals with R1 specifically, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so it says that those projects can be done ministerially, right?
Yes.
Ki- is that the case for R2 zones?
No, R2 zones, you go through a public hearing or have a discretionary process.
So that in itself seems to me that it would be worth exploring making the city R2, even though it might be politically not so nice. Because that puts the projects back into the jurisdiction's control to take a look at each individual project that would come in front using their same analysis that you have some exceptions when it comes to the, you know, health and safety, the environment, et cetera. So I'd like you and the staff to explore that avenue further because that's what came from them, those that are imposing those guidelines on us. That's all I say.
Mayor Protem Sternquist, that would be an incredibly in-depth analysis across the board and trying to understand some of the unintended consequences. Our approach that we've taken so far and we'll do, we'll, we'll, we'll follow, you know, the, the suggestions of council. Our approach here has been trying to, similar to the manner that which we dealt with ADUs. Um, try to find every element that we can go through. I understand the concern and, and we'll take a look, but that's really the approach that we've taken here is very similar to the approach that we took with ADUs as well. And, um, you know, uh, and we've heard from the council, we'll, we'll make sure to follow through on those things. But that's why that wasn't really presented as an option going forward because we're taking a more bite, bite, smaller bites of the apple related to this and understanding how significant this legislation is. Um, but that's, that was kind of why you see some of the options that are there as well.
Right, I'm just not comfortable with just those options. And it's, I, I think that because of what this can do to our city, I think we need to take a deep dive into it. I don't, I don't want just the minimal bites and pieces. Maybe, maybe that's what we need is a deeper analysis. I don't know. I, I mean, we've hired consultants for other things, but that's my opinion. That's what I would prefer. I, I'm not comfortable with, you know, saying I think we should do number one through six right now. I think there's just too much on the table and too much for our city to lose. That's all. Thanks.
I think, Mayor Protem, you know, as for me, I, I think we really need to look at the SB nine a little closer. Why we're all kind of reacting to it. I think the, the taking away the local control is just another aspect of many of the state laws. Uh, not just for SB nine. I think the reason why we're all reacting to it is the fact that it, it actually destroys the R1, the single family uh, neighborhood that we also love and the reason why we all moved to Temple City. Um, and many of us have lived here for, you know, thirty, forty years, and that's really the reason why we're here. And, and so it's just sort of trying to find a way to get rid of SB nine's applicability to Temple City by zoning to R2. I think we're actually getting the opposite effect. I mean, what does R2 mean? R2 means much smaller and denser development. So switching to R2 while it retains your local control, it is not getting where we, where the, it's not getting rid of the issue of this, this bill. This bill is making our city denser, uh, in, in, in areas that we don't think, um, uh, should be dense. And so in my opinion, R2 would not, and is not the answer. Um, you know, looking at SB nine, it's again, I mean, it's been said before, it's really, again, the state taking a very unrealistic simplicity approach to urban design. Uh, they're treating, uh, California basically as a flat. It's like a flat earth, uh, approach. And everything that from Sacramento should apply to everywhere and should be good. And unfortunately, uh, that is so far from the truth. Um, I look at the, uh, I think staff have done a great job in, in analyzing it. And I'm actually really surprised that SB nine, in spite of all it's, uh, what it want to do, had left, uh, out some of the very major loopholes in its own bill. I mean, many of the things that, uh, Mr. Reimer had, had pointed out, I think are key, really, really the key chinks in the armor, if you will, of SB nine. And, and I think by limiting, uh, through new development standards would be a good way to control the outcome of the SB nine. Because after all, it's not so much losing the, the local control that I have issue with. It's really the consequence of SB nine making the city denser and in ways that are very anti-single family. So if we can reduce the impact of that, I'm actually not, I don't have too much of an issue with it. So I'm totally open to, um, you know, first of all, historic preservation impact fees. I'm really not, not in favor of those because I think we're punishing people, um, and intently. I think the, some of the other aspects, um, uh, the Director Reimer brought up, the affordability. And actually, I was very pleasantly surprised by the affordability requirements. Also, the whole notion of not, not allowing parking. You know, in some way, in some ways, there's a, that's a cultural shift. And if I were thinking a little deeper into it, and, uh, maybe that's the future. Maybe have smaller units, uh, the unit that don't need parking because we have self-driving cars in twenty, thirty years and all that. So if we were going to do affordability, uh, I'm for that, but that needs to go with the, uh, no parking, no onsite or onsite. Uh, I'm all for if we're going to go denser. I'm all for having, uh, to mitigate that by higher environmental standard. Um, the design said new development standard, yeah, I'm, I'm all for that. Uh, and coming back, I would definitely say that the city had decided at one point to go single story on all flat lots because of density flat lot imposed on the city. I think the same single story high limit would also should be imposed on an urban lot. I think the same single story high limit will also should be imposed on an urban lot splits. And finally, one point that Councilmember Chavez brought up, maybe we seemingly were rushing it tonight. But I do believe that maybe if the council and the planning commission feels like that we need to have another meeting, I'm open to that to discuss this further. So those are my comments. I don't, I was told, we were told that this is being a study session, we don't really need a motion. But I just, before we adjourn to the city council meeting, I know we're kind of running late, we're running 30 minutes late. But I would just want to ask both the commission as well as the city council, do you have any further comments that you would like to share at this point? Hearing none. So I just want to ask Mr. Cook and Director Reamis, what we discussed tonight, do you need any further complications?
No, I think we've received some good input and we'll come back in a month or two, depending on which body you're in and with an ordinance and a plan for moving forward after that.
Okay, well, thank you so very much. I think you and your staff have done a terrific job in analyzing the SB nine. And I also want to take this opportunity to thank our commissioners for your service and a great meeting tonight. And with that, I would adjourn our meeting. And I think the council members and staff will probably can use a 10-minute break before we reconvene. So we're going to come back and start a regular meeting in 10 minutes.
Recording stopped.
Are we staying on this, or are we leaving and coming back?
It will be the same meeting length, Councilmember.